How do we mute this meeting?
Yeah, I'm good.
It'll get warm and they've had a long day.
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
So after we.
You leave your phone.
Hey. Because this room gets sort of hot quickly and I think we have some introductions of some new teachers who have had a very long day. We're going to sort of switch up the agenda a little bit so you don't have to wait forever. And so at this point, we are going to turn it over to Katie and Katie for introductions. And then those new staff are certainly welcome to stay or leave if you would like.
I'll start with the elementary and then Katie from the middle high school. I will start first with Elizabeth. This is Elizabeth Columbia and she is joining us as our new district EL community coordinator. She's kind of hit the ground running right away this last couple of days here. She'll be working really closely with quite a few of us. And also Stephanie Roberts. Our new Spanish teacher and EL support teacher. And between the two of them, they have some really innovative ideas that they're going to bring to the table.
Excellent.
And then Shawna Shawzabi, she is joining us as an elementary special ed teacher. She is definitely no stranger to the district, that's for sure. Probably knows way more about it than I do, but she's very high energy. I'm really excited for the students to meet her and for her to join our team. Stephanie and Kayden are two others, Kayden Shaw, so hopefully they can join us at another school meeting.
Welcome.
And if there's anything that you ladies want to add, feel free to.
Some of you, some of you don't.
All right, I'll start down there. And Angela Weber, she'll be teaching our middle school English. And she comes to us with some experience in the school in Milwaukee. Next is Kim Cramity, she'll be a middle school special ed teacher. And she has had experience in Wazaki and Kewaunee. Then we have Mr. Krau Kramer. He's coming from a little different background, more of a joint condition medical field background. We're a fire teacher. And then we have Mr. Dume, so we are middle school special ed teacher. We're just trying to get my tweets on. And then Julia is going to actually be our student representative for the year. So she'll be attending some meetings every month and reporting on us during training.
And we have another individual right in front that you all probably know quite well. Abby G. Robinson, so.
Abby will be a teacher at Oklahoma Venture Academy. Has the opportunity to do what she experienced as a youth in her high school and developing a project based on the environment. Happy to have her back in the world.
Any questions any one of you have?
We've got one more.
Oh.
There's so many.
That's actually very exciting.
Kramer to the crowd. Another our high schools secretary.
Hey, I love any people. Anybody have any comments or questions, anything you want to tell us more about you? Like I said, I know you all started early this morning and have had a lot of information today. So welcome to the district. Thank you for coming to the meeting and feel free to get home and get some rest. Rest after another good day.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, now people can fill in where there is.
On the state level, the state Senate Assembly. I've got some bills about critical research and if you watch the news, it's been hot on the topic right now. We don't teach it in our school, which I'm glad we don't personally. But we have some bills out there that want to prohibit teaching that CRT theory in your schools. And it would also require the school board to post all its curriculum. On the school board's district. And then if you. If you are found to be in violation of that, it would cost you 10% of your state aid. If, I mean, if these bills go into law and the city of Wisconsin says you cannot teach this. Then it would be about 15 or 10% of your of your state aid, but you wouldn't get. I mean, it also allows for people, parents or people to sue the district and they would get their attorney fees paid up to $15,000. Well, I mean, it's a problem in a lot of schools.
Sure.
And I think that if you teach your history right. The good and the bad, because every country has good and bad in their own countries and their history. Then this shouldn't be an issue.
The thing I am most concerned about is the posting curriculum online. I mean, talk about task intensive. Do we want our staff to be trying to post everything, every little curriculum thing online? Do we want them to be teaching our kids? I mean. They're lumping a couple of things together there.
Yes, they are lumping a couple of things together there. But again, one of the key words that we've heard this last how many years is transparency. Yeah, so that's what.
We have, yeah, certainly. People have the ability to get that same information. I guess somebody that's interested coming in and talking to us.
They run it on the website, so it's easily accessible to the public, not just parents, to the public. And then. In Wisconsin, there's a couple of bonding referendum interest disclosure bills. Right now, when you, when you want to go for a referendum, you have to put on the, on the. On the ballot, you know, you can't exceed more than a million dollars. Now they want you to put down what that referendum money, say if you go for a referendum for $5 million. They want you to put on, also on the ballot, what that's going to cost you in interest. Now, if it's a fixed rate, that's really simple to figure out. But if it's a variable rate, that could be a nightmare trying to figure that out. So we'll see, kind of see where that one ends up. And then there's a school budget transparency bill that they're looking at or presenting. It requires a DPI to make a detailed information related to financial data that the DPI collects from all school districts. They want to put it on a, on a database, I guess. And it's for school districts and county children with disabilities. They want to make it available on a single webpage. So, and the intent of this, and charter schools are included in this. And the intention of this is to make it easier for the public to track exactly how their school district is spending the funding they receive.
Say that again, though. Sorry.
I mentioned this 10 times. The proposal of bill. And you have to put down your information, the information the DPI gets from all the school districts, you put it on a single webpage.
So only about kids with disabilities, not anything else.
Oh, but let's see, where we go like, well, I was trying to figure that out myself. The school collects from school districts and county children with disabilities. So I don't know if it meant school districts and county children with disabilities, if it's all in one. Or if it's talking about two separate, you know, this is the state, it's pretty vague.
Well, it's also pretty ironic that they want to have people track the money when they don't give us anywhere near what the mandates. To try and even take care of.
But this, this again is transparency so the taxpayers can see.
Well, that might actually be good.
The tuition's funding and they fund like 12%, not even.
I mean, most special education is, is not funded anywhere near what it costs us. So I don't know if the public understands all of that. So you know, you look at this, you think, oh God, this is going to be horrible, but it might be something good. Yeah, if it gets passed. And then the last thing I have those. ARP, the American Rescue Pod Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. That maybe she'll help me out for anybody here. If you are a full-service community school. And I looked at the definition of that and it said full-service community school is a public elementary or secondary school. That uses established partnerships between schools, families and community organizations to provide well-rounded educational opportunities. And meet the social, emotional, physical, mental health and academic needs of students. Which I'm thinking, that pretty much describes us. So.
And a lot of other schools.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I'm another kid at the other school, but that pretty much describes us. So that would allow us to use those ESR funds to provide assistance for families and communities, support existing new service community schools. Provide integrated student supports and support collaborative leadership and practices. So because we, I'm thinking we are a community school, it would allow us to do that.
Where did that come from?
This last one?
They don't say those words, but they sort of imply it. Mental health too, same. I mean, it sounds like they're implying when they say, well, student supports, integrated student supports.
Yeah. We all know how that works sometimes.
Basically, so what they're saying, because all those COVID funds came with, this is how you have to use them. Yeah.
If you're a community school, you can use it for these things. And actually, these, these four criteria kind of beg. So that could entail a lot of things.
Yeah, that would be, that sounds promising. All right, I like hearing some promising things from you.
I very rarely get to report them. Any stressors that come as a pet.
Okay, we will move on. But to refer, we will be skipping as Nikki is not with us. Citizens' delegation to be heard. Okay, we have Barb Goodman.
Want to make a general comment, because last year was really. It was kind of, well, just weird, but anyway, the, we were having some issues with one of our daughter's students at this high school who had. It's just going to be some vague comments here. Had two teachers that were working together that. Were very clear about what their stance on politics were. Which then made it very stressful and difficult for her. You know, in the way that she came home almost on a daily basis. Feeling like she couldn't answer questions the way that she truthfully wanted to answer those questions. Because she felt that they would affect her grades or the way that the teachers viewed her. And so I just am hoping that, just in a general way, since we're in this time right now. Where there's very, you know, polarized views on things, that we can keep that out of the school. You know, the kids don't need that stress. They don't have the ability to change any of it because they can't vote. And so I think. You know, it adds to the mental health of the kids, you know, either negatively or positively when they're trying to influence thought that way. And so I'm hoping since this is parent teacher, or not parent teacher, like teacher conference week or whatever. That maybe that would be a good thing to review.
I think that's a very valid point. I do hope that since you're talking about something that already happened, that you did try and approach those teachers. And we do have a whole process where, you know, if you're concerned about things, you go to the teachers. If you're not satisfied, you can go to the building principal. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, but thank you for your concern. Kim?
Okay, should I just? Violence intervention project. I'm a youth advocate and prevention educator. Then with the agency, this is going to be my fourth year starting there. I've been working with doing prevention education, which falls under anti-bullying, helping relationships, unhelping relationships, team dating violence. You know, child abuse and the other topics that I cover. But I've been doing prevention education all throughout Kewaunee County for that long time. Part of my role is obviously the prevention, like I, half of it is working one, one big individual advocacy with families and children. The other part of it is doing prevention education science. So, you know, we would all love to prevent things, right? And, you know, teachers have enough on their plates with, you know, their topics and their curriculum. And part of my role is to get in those long-term life skills that you may or may not get at home. Not every parent advocates for their child and for their education. We definitely appreciate that, but I'm here to help, you know, bring that in and, you know, open up perspectives and minds. For kids to really understand why things are the way they are and help improve their culture. So part of that. In creating a safer environment for all students is bringing in the athletes as leaders in respect curriculum. So this is, I started initially in the Kewaunee High School. And their basketball teams, their varsity basketball teams, this curriculum is strictly for like high school age students. So these topics can be quite sensitive as far as, you know, we're looking at what is consent, what is sexual harassment? What is healthy and what's unhealthy? But in doing that, we build on each week, starting from the basics of group dynamics, group rules. Make sure that everybody's on the same page, because I'm not going to create change in one general classroom. It's going to take the students through that. It's going to take the athletes to be representatives and not just be a bystander to violence, but to be an upstander. And help advocate for other students and other athletes and to be more inclusive for one another. So in doing that, you know, they're going to get educated on, you know, what some of these root causes of violence are. And hopefully understand, you know, what is healthy and what is unhealthy, the right place. And be able to create a more positive team atmosphere, but then also more positive atmosphere in the community and in their culture. So when I was doing this research into the curriculum, I had found that this one is used by a lot of colleges throughout the nation. And I, you know, looking at the stats from it and the success rates and people's, you know, the athletes that are saying, you know, that made a positive impact on them and opened their eyes. And then also looking at statistics and we do like a pre-survey and a post-survey of the athletes and like, do they think it's beneficial? And so far, I've only been able to do the Kewaunee basketball team, I started to track it when COVID hit. So I was going to be able to do like a pre and a post survey with them. But on all, you know, they're saying it's a positive impact, it brought their teams together. And it helps, you know, help them learn how to create a better culture in their school.
On it? All right, thank you. I have one additional thing that I received, a letter, a signed letter from Elizabeth Mala. And she was unable to come to read it to you herself. So she asked that I would read it. Again, this is not from me, it is, does not necessarily represent my opinion or any opinion of the board. It is simply a letter from a concerned parent. Dear members of the Oklahoma School Board of Education. The 2021 school was a challenging time for everyone, but our Oklahoma school district did an amazing job keeping the schools open. By taking measures to prevent the spread of the novel coronavirus. Regular cleaning, disinfecting, self-contained smaller groups and mandatory masks. As students, teachers and staff helped make our schools a safe place for learning. Our country as a whole appeared to also be making great strides towards containing the virus. To the point where masking and capacity restrictions have been lifted. However, with the prevalence of the newer and more contagious B.1.617.2 Delta variant. All of that progress seems to now be in reversal. Many areas, districts have already made the call to make masking optional for 2021, 2022. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention on 7/9 issued updated guidance recommending universal indoor masking for teachers, staff, students and visitors to K-12 schools. Regardless of vaccination status. Additionally, the CDC on 7/27 called for an even fully vaccinated individual in any situation. To again, wear masks indoors where there is a substantial or high transmission. And then she has in parentheses, our region is currently considered high. Furthermore, the Delta variant has been the cause for a higher hospitalization rate among youth as compared to the original virus strain. The following link offers more detail regarding protection for our children. She included a link for the CDC guidance. I strongly believe that the last decision would be to follow the CDC's recommendations and maintain the full masking requirement for students, teachers and staff as school resumes this fall. Children through grade six are now yet eligible to receive a vaccine, which puts them at higher risk for more serious illness if infected. Please continue to enforce policies and procedures to keep our children and their families safe and healthy. Respectfully, Elizabeth Mala. And that completes.
I didn't sign up to speak, but I still speak. I didn't intend to break that, can I still sign and speak?
Or is there a time that we could possibly take on our stance of what?
We have had people at previous meetings also speaking. It is our policy to sign.
I didn't realize I was going to want to speak, but now.
I guess I'm going to let you, just so you understand that this is not.
I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I mean, it is our meeting and, and this, this section of the agenda is to allow us to hear concerns in the community. And so if you can keep it concise and, and certainly, go ahead.
My daughter, I know, does not like it to mess. Distraction. And I personally don't want her in mass. I believe there's been an extreme rise in back to arrest, back to taxes of the lungs due to mass. We don't know how long can infected get wearing masks. Very, children are very, very conscious of, are very. They need to see facial movements, they need to see lips, they need to see mouths. And without this, it's developing, starting development, along with the carbon dioxide buildup in those masks that they're getting. She's a headache when she's on too long. That's not good for children, it's a poison going into their brains. When that mask contains carbon dioxide, they're not expelling all that carbon dioxide, they're sucking it back in. Over a period of time, that builds up in their systems. And they get headaches, things like, she come home last year with headaches. I do not want to see my daughter in mass chair. If optional, if other people want it, that's fine. The mask isn't given, it's a slate of monitor that is going to stop the virus. To me, is it worth? The side effects and the detrimental effects. My daughter Ruth does not like it.
Okay.
People want it, it's cool.
And, and you realize that our current policy is that it's optional, so we're not making.
I, I, I'm willing to say that way, really wanted to say that way.
Okay.
No, I know my daughter would really love it to say that way.
She was in special ed up until we had moved back to Minnesota. Since we came back, Minnesota had gotten rid of her IDP because it didn't cause a detriment to her scholastic. And since we've been back, she does have ADHD within close control. I know you're familiar with our Lily here. They say that it doesn't hurt focus. Her test scores came down this year versus what we've seen in prior years. And the one major difference is that she was forced to wear masks. And I know right now that it is an optional. Our concern is, you know, we don't, if this parent says they're more comfortable with it, by all means. But having it mandated and, you know, the children are forced to. Especially with her. Her special ed, part of the problem was speech delay. And a big part of that is being able to see and enunciate the words. And I also have a son who's autistic. One of the big things that he needed to see the full face to understand. And I feel that our children are losing and having a detriment to their learning process socially, because they're missing them.
There is no question that we would all love to get rid of masks completely, because your points are valid and we do hear them. I'm going to go ahead and have you sign in so that we can record appropriately that you. And thank you for sharing your comments.
She, one short comment, I hope, short.
No, we, I'm not going to allow that, I'm sorry. Moving on to the present and announcements. I just want to say I loved being able to greet everyone this morning at their first day of teacher orientation. I think we have the best district around and nobody can convince me otherwise. Everybody's excited to get going in a new year and try and keep it as normal as possible. But so, so we always have to announce that. Talking about our regional meeting program. Jason, I would like to sign up for the online one. It's October 27th instead of the in-person one. Which is scheduled back to the sixth of the Rock Day. I don't know what other people want to do.
So the online one is what they have scheduled?
No, October 27th is the online workshop. And regional meeting. The workshop begins at five, the online regional meeting begins at seven. We would get the same content we would get at October 6th. You can't vote for any officers if you do the online, but we don't have any positions to vote for, that's it, we haven't. So. I'm just more comfortable myself, I'm not saying that anybody else has to do that. But frankly, I have a lot of other restaurants that I would rather go to if I was going to allow myself to do that, so.
Well, when you think about the participation, the attendance, it might as well just be online anyway.
Yeah, it's really has gone down.
Yeah.
So online is when? Online is October 27th. And if you want to do the workshop. And if you wanna do the workshop, which is effective community engagement, that starts at five, and the meeting starts at seven.
Jason, we have time, so you get that information, okay? For online.
So, along we register, you know, we hear so in advance, if we do the online one.
Yeah.
Probably fine.
Okay.
So Barbara, you wanna do the workshop?
I would workshop and online meeting, online. Jason, I'm the same. I will as well, Jason. Okay. Moving on to administrative, administration reports, starting with you, Nick.
Mine is super simple. Obviously, we got to kick off in service today, last week we had some teachers in the district for their day. And it's always great to bring everybody back in the building and talk about things that will make this school year happen. Certainly, we understand and know that we have challenges, but we can't work through any of those challenges if we're not a team. So that was my whole theme today. And also, we have a number of new staff members that I think were, you know, great perspective to our district. We have people that have worked in other districts for, you know, north of 25 years, and we have people that have just graduated. So they bring a lot of enthusiasm and ideas to our staff. So it's exciting. Also, it's my favorite time of the year because all of our buildings, you know, all of our projects that go on all summer long, the buildings are done, they're shiny, and everything is ready to go. So it's a good time of the year to start and kick things off. So, yeah, we had a great launch today. But.
The bed is.
You know.
Yes, we're tired.
They, we had a roast, roasted a pig in the parking lot, and it was excellent.
Can't beat that.
They do a great job. As a fact, you know, all of their hard work last year, I mean, certainly it's not easy, certainly this year won't be easy either. So just an appreciation on my behalf to.
Yeah.
Say thank you to all of them for all the hard work.
Great. Elementary principals report.
Right, my report is also in a brief. I already introduced two of our new staff members, and then you had the chance to meet Katie Strutz at our July meeting. So Stephanie Robertson and then Kate and Shaw, they will hopefully be joining us soon so that we can keep them as well, although they are no stranger to the district either. But in their new roles, it would be good for them to be introduced. We are planning for open house. Open house, we're kinda taking a different approach this year. So our grades one through six, we're going to, back to more of a traditional open house. Just dropping hours from the time of three to six on Thursday, which is August 26. Our younger students, those were, those are scheduled by the classroom teachers. They felt they really liked that one-on-one time with the families, especially, you know, when we have our three and four-year-olds coming to school for the very first time. The teachers really liked just having that time dedicated to that family, that student, the caregivers, whoever might be coming along, rather than, you know, 10 students coming at once and not really being able to meet and get to know everybody. So Thursday is for grades one through six. On Wednesday, 4K and kindergarten have their scheduled meet and greets with their teachers. And then Little Stars, they have a really big group this year. Little Stars and Early Childhood are split between two days. Also scheduled meet and greets Tuesday and Thursday. So a little complicated to explain, but the teachers have been great about contacting the families and setting all of that up if need be. We are still doing a bunch of planning for the fall. A lot of it kinda centered around logistics yet at this point. There's a lot of things that we are tying up with transportation, arrival dismissal. We'll be getting communication out to families this week just with some facts about what to expect starting the school year, arrival times. I know that was different last year, so we're just, I just wanted everybody to know that that information will be coming as we just type some moves in. So we're very excited to have everybody there.
Yeah, and you know, it is just so nice to have previous students coming back after they've had their education, coming back to the community and wanting to be part of it. It's a credit to the system that they would like to do that. So I love that. Okay, any other comments or questions? We'll move on, little school, high school principal report and Pathfinder report.
Yes, most of my staff was here as well. Although I didn't join, he's our little school manager, but he looks in that box. So. For our schedule this year, we're going back to a more normal scheduling, the seventh period day. But we have taken out the break in between first and second hour. The kids will be able to get their free breakfast before school from 7:30 to 7:55 time period. And then in between classes, the kids have a five-minute break or a three-minute break. Because if you're over, I'll find out that with, maybe it'll be the same, but we'll see with the three-minute break, the kids aren't coming in until five minutes anyway because they're using the bathroom or having to come downstairs to get a drink. Last year, some of the bubbles were shut off, so we moved to five minutes between classes. Open house, ours will be also on Thursday, about 4:00 to 7:00. All of our students will be able to pick up their Chromebooks at that time and kind of drop off their supplies. When they come into open house on Thursday, there will be signs as to where each grade level will go to pick up their Chromebooks. So I think we're housing them all in the cafeteria, but it will be on separate tables for a while. And then Pathfinder enrollment numbers, we're already up to 14 for the year. So Harvard is pretty full already. We tried a couple of kids over in Ross Brothers School. So, once is really excited to start up again, but it's a big number. Usually don't get that till about, very much of the year, so.
Speaking of Pathfinder parking lot. Um, I have a big concern about safety relating to that. So I hope that they understand that that is our parking lot. And once school starts and there are going to be children and parents and all sorts of school-related things happening, that, that they need to find another place to park their large vehicles. Okay. Other questions for Katie? Comments? Okay, business managers, finance committee, Jason.
Okay, so we have our audit. So what we have on our plan, both is our last journal entry. So it's the journal entry that our auditor gives every year. What is this, strictly to do with old pens? So between Nicolay Bank and our orders, they were picking up this entry. So this will be our final entry, and then the book should be cool. So with this entry, cash on hand for our old account, $4,529.49. Personal services, $3,724.24. His donations and contributions, $67,336. Implicit rate subsidy, $16,364. And interest on investments, $9,012. So that would be our final entry. The interest on investments. With old pens, as you know, we set the guidelines, but Nicolay Bank and myself were to actually do the investments. So we had a pretty good year, our investments. So. That'd be our final entry for that. Later on, there's a motion, or there's an actual approved entry. As always, every month, I attach the, where our budget stands for the information. And if I can have you flip to the various pages after the budget entry. This is some general information on your certified, there's on the general, later on. So just highlighted, the reserve fund page is sort of a highlighting, and the rest of the stuff is more of a detailed information. But basically. Some highlights with this technology that we're looking at, is that you're not used ozone or any of our harmful products. It's mechanical filtration. That's a 99.95% filtration efficiency at 0.1 microns. It's a fully contained unit, so. There's nothing that bypasses the filter. It is basically controlled by a central computer program. Close the action control of their rooms. So comparing like some of the other units, individuals I control, this will be the janitor staff will have control over the units that I have. We don't notify the janitor staff for food replacement. The food is kind of cold on my side, and see, and are a lot cheaper than, I'll say, a good side of that. One of the biggest, I'll say benefits of the current year that I'm very many is that has a high airflow rate for CFM. So you can change all the air in a room. And from everything I've read, that seems to be the biggest benefit is faster you can change the air. Obviously, faster you're there, more noise, that's where you gotta balance. We've had some demo units running, and the sound, the sound is not very loud at all. So that is probably the biggest benefit of this. Like I said, I include some more detail and some specs that I have stuff. I'm not paying for the run, but. That is where we're at with the airflow rate.
Jason, I don't, I know nothing about these, do they run silent?
They're not silent, but they're very soft, less than a fan. So I got it, I didn't know much about these until I really started researching it. That also, and I guess I didn't realize that machines use ozone and like that.
Oh, yeah.
So I learned sort of it, so.
Yeah, sounds like you found a good one.
Thanks for looking out.
Yeah, right.
How many units do you think we'll be able to get?
Well, it depends on you guys and our registration and that stuff. But I mean, I think for sure, I believe what we're looking for is elementary school, I'm thinking it's down there, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think the elementary school is, again, with optional masking, it's just another layer of protection for the kids if we have a airifier in the rooms. I think up here at the high school, maybe if you can choose, maybe the quiet room or something, or, you know, we might wanna look at. I think it's a little different situation up here, even in compliance with masks and whatever. But yes, I feel pretty strongly about using any precaution we can that doesn't disrupt the education and tries to keep our kids as safe as we can. So, and, and those S R funds that Pat was talking about, yes, that expense falls right into it. You know, it helps cover some of the expenses that we had to try and educate kids last year, but it also provided funds to try and make it safe this year. And so we wanna use those funds that we've been given for that purpose. So thank you, Jason, it sounds like you found some good ones. If we really like them and want to expand, is it available for? I mean.
Yes.
Is it one on them right now or anything?
So I'll say mostly readily available.
Okay.
Obviously, like everything seems to be delayed, you still get things in two days. Obviously, there's more delay in that. But there seems to be, they'll be.
Good. Other questions or comments for Jason? Okay, we'll keep moving. Special ed report. There you are.
Hi. I also wanted to extend my welcome to our new staff, especially in special ed. We have taken a turn over this year, treating the special ed teachers and four or five care professionals that were on the team. So it'll be some new ideas and energy to bring, to enable from the, from that. We're still getting a review with Pervia in search of an occupational therapist to open up or fill that vacancy. And then lastly, been getting a lot of new enrollments lately of students with IEPs, our special ed population. Short乎speak, but it's just kind of what's going on in the room session.
Yeah. Questions or comments for Marie? All right. Keep doing what you're doing. Welcome to our monthly update, too.
Well, beautiful All of America City banners are around our town, so I hope you all have a chance to see them when you're driving around with us last week. So I was excited that they made that happen before Shanti Days. And I wanted to just extend like a huge thank you. I saw lots of businesses, nonprofits, and other organizations that purchase extra banners to promote what they're doing. And I just thought it was, you're in line with next team or a team, we're doing this together, so that was nice. Our Mobile Resource Center is being utilized. I hope you see it mobilizing around town. The usage will pick up during this school year. It kind of has a three-pronged approach right now, but I think there's more opportunities. One, it mobilizes resources, any basic needs that our families, especially rural areas, might need. It can mobilize support services, so mental health services, that sort of thing. And then field trips, so kind of like the magic school bus with Miss Frizzle. Our new librarian is thinking of some ideas when students go on field trips. She can pull up a mobile resource center, it's gonna be equipped with Chromebooks with Jesse. And students can come on in small groups and then really research and utilize that whole resource center. So we really want it to be an asset for just multiple purposes. So if you have an idea of how it can be used, let us know. That's it. Thank you for that, I'll go on.
Questions or comments for you? Did you put it in the parade? And I.
Do you know, and here's the thing, I think people really enjoy the parade around here, and it's really hard to find people that want to like eat in the parade. They either wanna enjoy it, or if we think of our youth, we have a large population, we're in youth in band, so.
I think they really do, isn't it?
Sure. Yeah.
Next time I say it.
Next time we're gonna ask you, yeah. But I do think that was, in hindsight, we probably should have planned it a little ahead of time and had it out so people could come in and see it. So.
Next year.
Next year, we're thinking of a fall festival, drive it to, and then just pop-up shop. We also use it as like one of those, come on, see what we have to offer, like the wellness center, how do you sign up, booster code, clothes, can you order them? The now bargaining center, you could, maybe purchase some, you know, produce. So there's lots of possibilities for that beautiful mobile resource center. And I tell you, there's a lot of eyes on it from, from other school districts. So maybe we start with something they, they'll get on to.
Well, that won't be the first time. You know, it's the greatest compliment when people model after us. It's a real frustrating when then they try and take the credit for picking up it, but hey.
That doesn't happen now.
Anything else for you? Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. We had a public. I marked it right off, yeah. Please.
A little mentor county has 21 students enrolled as of today that have been public interest. So we'll see. I wanna just have a public announcement about what Venture Academy is. I'll probably keep saying it every single month so that we can be advocates for an additional learning pathway. It is not Pathfinder. Pathfinder is an internal decision of students that go to Pathfinder based on lots of different things that. Um, based on lots of different things that um the student's care team decides, so we get them together, parents, students, admin, teachers, and talk about it, that's about our setting, that's off campus for most students. Um, Venture Academy will be co-located here at the middle school, high school, and it is a public charter school, which means any student grade seven through twelve. Can um apply to be part of that pathway, um, they're still students of our district. We just have um a contract with the school board, we have our own governance board, ensure that contract. We kind of like do a little dance and ensure that we have autonomy. Um, our charter school is focused on project-based learning, hands-on learning, um, community projects. And they can, they still obtain credit, um, they just obtain credit in a different way, so their core subjects. And their electives look like they're more meshed together than maybe separate classes where our traditional setting offers. So it's not that um we're trying to take over the traditional setting by any means. Um, it's just that we realize that not all students are engaged in their learning in what we have offered in middle school, high school. So we had to provide another learning pathway for students who need that project-based um real application. Um, and I just want to plug this because I've been hearing some rumors, of course, in Oklahoma, and it is a, a place for all students to enroll. Um, so we, we take them all from a public charter school.
Although there is a limit this first year.
There is a limit, which goes to my next uh talking point. In our contract, I'm going to have to bring an amendment for next month, so I know, it's okay, man, it's all right. You know, when you open something you scale forward, you learn, you know, we've never had a contract before, so. One of the things that they did see that they missed, they as the state missed the first time, is that when you have a, when we have capped enrollment, so this year. We have a capped enrollment, next year that capping will increase, so it'll increase by about twenty students. That is for um really those who are currently enrolled to have an opportunity to just be enrolled again. Um, in our clause, we said that we could give precedence over students who are Algoa School District, um, who live in the Algoa School District. And um siblings of those who are already enrolled. What the state played is that we can't put precedence over students who live in the Algoa School District countries. So we're still okay getting precedence over siblings, um, but we cannot get precedence over Algoa School District students of those who are currently enrolled. Um, so what that means is they're sort of go back into, if we ever go past our cap, they'd have to go back into a lottery, we have a public lottery because we can't. You know, pick and choose who's going to attend the charter, it's got to be a public um process. So a very small thing that we have to just edit, but just, we'll have to have a committee meeting prior to our next school board meeting and, and make those changes. And then last but not least, our hydroponics units are being installed in one of our pods. Um, we honestly, the amount of community partnerships that we have are manufacturing the places that we are partners with, the phone doesn't stop. Um, Doorpoint Medical Center, like how can we get your students involved um in our setting and how can they obtain credit? So it's really great to hear some of this, the community buzz and support that way. Um, so, yeah, open house Thursday, four to seven, St. Louis Middle School, High School. If you haven't seen the space, I encourage everybody who want to be at charter school students or not to come and look and see what it's about and see the space.
And I think it is extremely important for us to keep educating people about it because it's new. We're the only charter school in Kiwanee and the um. Everybody wants to know about, everybody thinks it's a separate building or whatever, and the other thing that people need to know is that kids, if they make that choice and it doesn't work. They just move back into the traditional school. Um, it's, it, it's not like you're locked in if it doesn't work. The whole idea is to try and find something that works for the kids, so um people have to understand that as well.
You know, but I think two barbers, they can be in a charter school, but if they want to take class out in regular school, they can do that, so.
We have about sixty percent of our students who choose to have one class in the legacy school, and that's for a lot of different purposes. Um, band, for example, is a big one, uh, we can't provide that in the charter space necessarily. Um, and then um like in math, we have a math curriculum, an online math curriculum that those charter schools use in the state of Wisconsin. Um, I love it, but not every student wants it, they have an in-person teacher, so we have to just have those conversations with families. The, you know, one thing that they have to be aware of is that when they, the more classes they choose in the traditional setting, the more restricted their schedule is. Um, so, you know, sometimes what's natural is that's, this is all they know, students and families, all they know is traditional, so they want to take all their core classes in. In um the traditional space and then, you know, come half a day in the charter pathway. And we really encourage not to do that because that's more like a hybrid model, and we already have it, people want to do projects in Wolf Tech or whatever, we can provide that. The charter space is really like, you know, I would say ninety-five percent of where their schedule is project-based learning, um, supplemented by things that we need to look at, so. Those are just conversations that we have with our families and students.
Exciting.
It is.
And like you said, we're just starting, we're going to learn, we're going to keep, keep adjusting as we go until we get it to where we want it. Okay. So that's good too, now moving on to committee reports. Public relations marketing. We met August fourth, uh, we discussed the website redesign and what we want to see in, in the needs of the school. Uh, the website will be owned by the Algoa School District. And one of the exciting things, I think, is that it includes an auto translation. So push a button and it goes in Spanish. Wonderful. Or whatever, I guess, but Spanish, we have so many Spanish families. And you want things simplified, simplified, so that you can just go in there, you can look what you want, you can push a button, not a button, but. I'm kind of illiterate. And yeah, it is. Before, we had problems with that. Um, let me discuss the Life and Style Magazine, I think, was this the fourth one that's coming out, third? And that is really a nice publication. And also, we looked at other marketing projects. And like I said, did we put the mobile? In the. No, that was in our minutes, so we kind of hope to do that. So our next meeting is September twenty-first at one o'clock. And anybody want to add anything, please do. Cover that. Okay, um, policy and practice call the meeting um last Wednesday, we had had one. Um, until like twentieth, where we um discussed just in getting ready for school. Some of the things we wanted to do to make sure that the school is as safe as possible, that's where we were talking about getting these air filters and. Um, trying to do as much spacing as we can and um encouraging masking, encouraging vaccinations. Encouraging outdoor lessons as much as possible. Just being aware that we're not over the hump with this virus and we want to keep the schools open, so we want to try and keep whatever measures we can in place. Um, with the changing, because this is a moving target with. All sorts of CDC and FDA and the Department of Health and even the Department of Public Instruction from the state. Issuing new recommendations, we met again um. To determine, we, whether we're not meeting to determine if we were going to change anything, we had decided for the schools, it was really more to discuss. What we might expect out of staff. And so um we had a good discussion, um, we talked about all the same kinds of things. Um, and decided that, and so it was basically to determine handbook kinds of changes, but um decided that. The staff can use a good judgment, we trust our staff. They are certainly not going to want to risk any child's health or safety. So that's where we looked at, so we actually, um, when it comes down to action items. Um, aren't even going to have to address that with the mitigation strategies because we did not change anything. We did not put anything in writing, we're maintaining at this point um optional masking. Encouraging every possible layered safety measure we can take to try and keep everyone safe. Staff and students and the community and families, I mean, we, we want to have a healthy community. Questions or comments on that? Okay, other specific items for discussion, because we had talked about um altering our policy on public participation at board meetings, it has certain. Requirements of discussion and then a reading and then adoption. So this is the reading and all we are adding to it is the, the three-minute. Um, limit, everything else is exactly the same. Any questions on that, you do have it in, in your packet.
Something I might add is maybe we should have a sign or something so that people, when we do come with our first board meeting. They understand that if they want to talk, they need to, you know, they need to sign in, so.
Yeah, I think.
A sign or.
I mean, we have them right there and we have it and anybody who knows, but you can forget that there are people who are coming for the first time, I do not realize that, which is why I tried to give you the opportunity. Um, I agree, um, it would be a simple saying, you know, having a sign at the end of that table. Um. Okay. We'll move on to action items.
I just, Julia was here before our student rep, so we need to add that up in our agenda.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Julia, she was sitting right here.
Yes.
She's a student rep. So we haven't had one in a long, long time.
Yeah.
So. That was a really good addition to our.
Oh, absolutely, wonderful.
I was.
Yeah, student representative report, yes, we need to get that back on the agenda, good catch. Anything else? Okay, now we'll go to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Legislation Legislative Action Committee meeting minutes of July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one. Public Relations Marketing Committee meeting minutes of August fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Policy and Practice Committee meeting minutes of August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I still move.
I'll second. Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion please. I need a motion to approve the bills that were presented to us in our packet.
So.
Second.
I have motion by Pat, seconded by Jennifer, questions or discussion on the bills? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion please. I need a motion to approve the final entries to close out the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, which were presented to us.
I'll move.
A second.
All right, motion made by Ann, seconded by Jennifer, questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion case? Now, this next is our resolution, we will need a, we need a motion in a second and then I get to read all the whereas is. What, and then we'll call. I need a motion to approve the rise by resolution for expanding mental health services.
Excellent. A second.
All right, Joanne and Jennifer, um, I am going to read it and then we will do a roll call and vote following. Resolution in support of broadening the scope of mental health services in Wisconsin Administrative Code PI thirty-four subchapter seven. Whereas the significant unmet mental health crisis in our state and in our schools. And whereas early recognition and intervention strategies can help avoid serious consequences to those struggling with mental health issues. And whereas the Wisconsin School Mental Health Framework recognizes the need for an intensive level of mental health supports. And whereas easy access to care is the key to successful treatment. And where services from community partners with appropriately trained professionals often have wait times and complicated paperwork creating barriers to timely treatment. And whereas offering appropriate mental health services in the school setting would increase the access for our students in need. And whereas current licenses listed in chapter PI thirty-four, subchapter seven do not include trained mental health professionals. And where staff of the currently listed educator licenses of school counselors, school psychologists and school social worker. Either have the time or the professional training to give appropriate mental health therapy to students. And whereas with no license category, districts with student mental health expenses cannot count the expenses, pupil services. And are caught between trying to meet a significant need and having no funding opportunity. And whereas having a mental health professional category in PI thirty-four, subchapter seven. Would allow districts a mechanism to receive some reimbursement for pupil mental health expenses through general or categorical aids. And whereas determination of the percentage of reimbursement given through the aids is on the legislative side. Limiting the potential to have a large impact on the school state budget. Therefore, be it resolved that the Algoa School Board calls on the Wisconsin State Assembly and the Wisconsin Senate. To address this unfunded mental health need in the schools. And broaden the scope of mental health service licenses in the pupil service area of chapter PI thirty-four, subchapter seven. To include licensed mental health social worker, licensed mental health counselor, licensed mental health psychologist and community mental health coordinator. This is twenty-three, day of August, started educations for district of Algoa. Okay, we need to do a roll call vote, we'll start with you, David.
Yes.
Jennifer's? Jen?
Yeah, yeah.
And Pat?
Yes.
And I also say yes. So this is a resolution that we came up with in our committee that we are going to be submitting to the Wisconsin Association for School Board for consideration. Um, at the annual convention, well, actually, they have to, they have to approve it first to, to move it on. If it gets moved on, then it will be addressed by the whole Board, but Assembly of the State. Um, and since this is an issue, not just with our district, that's why we want to do that, so.
And that, and if the people are here, basically, it's almost like an accounting issue. And you think there's no, there's no category for those services, so the district can't get any reimbursement for that.
Right. So, um, and in any case. This is our resolution and whether the Wisconsin Association for School Board wants to take it up as a statewide thing or not, we will be.
But it does affect every, every district.
Absolutely, so we're hoping that they, so that they. That they do take it up and, um, and lobby for that with us, so. Okay. That is not necessary, so we are not going to take that because as I said. Um, there was nothing changed to have to approve. So the last um action item, um, approved purchase of air purifiers not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
I move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ann, seconded by Joanne. I do not need a, a roll call vote for that level. Um, any questions or further discussion on that?
Jason, did you say how many we were purchasing for the seventy-five?
No.
You didn't.
You know, it's around where you feel the need is going to be. So basically, they're a little under about that.
So you're allowing for ordering a few more under those if we want to.
Um, the, and then additional filters.
Uh-huh. So, um, how many units does this cover for the elementary schools?
Ballpark.
I mean, technically, we did buy probably seventy units.
Okay.
We.
Any further comments or questions? I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Yes.
All right, um, motion carries. I need a request or any request for future agenda items. I just had a question on the young lady that was presenting from VIP. Is that something that we wanted to discuss about doing here? I'm assuming she was presenting because. Is she going to be doing it in there? Okay. Okay, excellent, okay. Good. All right, well, then that we don't need to, we don't need to do that. Anything else anyone can think of? All right, then I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five subsections, one C E F and I. For the purpose of personal matters, hires, staffing and resignations.
I still will.
What you mean by joining during your second?
Well, second.
Roll call vote, Dave?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and I also say yes.